Welcome to the regular meeting of the Biloxi City Council on June 4th, 2024. Please rise for the invocation by...
Tisdale.
Tisdale, that's right.
I pray for all leaders of your people. I pray that we will not lead selfishly for personal ambition or vain conceit. That leading is really a task that requires us to serve. Raise us up as servant leaders. Amen.
Amen. Felix, will you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic which is theirs, one nation, united in the physical, with liberty and justice for all.
Being that there is a change to the agenda, do we have a motion to amend the agenda?
So move second.
Motion by Mr. Lawrence, second by Mr. Tisdale. All in favor? Unanimous vote. Ms. Carey, will you read those changes?
To the consent agenda, we're substituting item 5(c) resolution authorizing donation of a mobile office trailer to the Open Doors Homeless Coalition.
I move the agenda as amended.
Second.
Motion to move it as amended by Lawrence and second by Mr. Tisdale. Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous vote. This brings us to the presentation agenda. Mayor's report.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. Welcome everyone to our first meeting in June. And that pretty much concludes my report, except I would ask to spread the expenses of Biloxi Traveling Credit Card to the minutes.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Being that there is no departmental report, we'll move on to council reports. Mr. Lawrence?
Yeah, we got tomorrow at 5:00. We're cutting a ribbon for the addition at the dockside.
He said 5:00 or 4:00?
Right, 5:00, right?
I think it's 4:00.
4:00?
I think so.
Okay.
I'll verify. 4:00, it's 4:00.
4:00. And then we had the first ceremony for the blessing of the fleet at 6:00.
6:00.
Right, so you have to be, you gotta be busy tomorrow for a change. You'll be off. Then this weekend at the Billfish Tournament, which is a big tournament, a lot of money comes into town. If like Paul did, they've got $10 million toy, the boat they ride around in. They was the only ones that got that kind of money up here to do that. And the jeeping, Chief Miller, could you give a little run on what happened with the jeeping this weekend?
There was a lot of jeeping folks in town. The main part of jeeping was in Long Beach. That's where they had everything set up there. But I did see a lot of jeeps in town. I saw a lot of people around in the restaurants. So we benefited from Long Beach's event, I think, a lot. And as far as I know, there were no issues in Long Beach. There were none here with jeepers.
They put a lot of money in them jeeps.
Oh, they do.
It's unbelievable. I think we used to ride around in the green with it in World War II.
World War I.
They have a custom version, Jerry Creel, Jaredith. It was brought up to my attention from, they watched the video last week. And the question was, the tattoo Paul we passed, was it actually listed inside of a neighborhood block? That was the question. Is a block, is not a neighborhood block? That was a question to me.
It's on the same block with residential property, yes, sir.
So it is listed there?
Yes.
Okay. So that was the thing. I said, I'll have him ask the question, he can answer the question.
Yeah, that's true.
Make sure that was right. All right. Let's see. Another thing that brought up to my attention today, that we changed the ward line again, and Felix took over Ward 1. So when we changed the line in 2021, it's usually 10 years before we change them again, unless it's a drag to change the population. So as far as 2025, the same ward line to be used that we just did. I mean, if people ask me the question, I say, well, I'll ask them and put it on them. Let people answer the question, not you folk, we tell them to the lawyer. So they nominated 10 years, so we did it in 2021, so it'll be at least 10 years before they change again the ward line, the way they were set for 2021 election.
Yes, yes, that's correct.
All right. I just want to make sure. Thank you.
Felix, Mr. Gaines?
Okay. And thank you, George, for Ward 1. I'll take credit for all the paving in the Holy Land.
You the Pope.
That's right. I want to thank Chief Miller for all the policing in Ward 2. It's been an uptick in police cars. Keep it going, keep it up, keep it going. We love to see those cars rolling through the community. And I want to just talk briefly about the Family Dollar, which is on Division Street and Nichols Drive. Talked to the district manager, and the district manager said that they were looking at expanding the Family Dollar, because the business has been very high. I know there have been rumors about other things, but no, they are looking at expanding it. If they close down, it would be closed down to build it bigger, because of the economy. That concludes my report.
Mr. Tisdale?
Yes, several things. On the Green is out there by Sunkist Country Club, runs north and west. And there are a couple of concrete panels that they've removed to repair, and there's a lot of rock in there. It's been there for a while, so they just need to finish that repair. It's just concrete, Mayor. I know it seems to be pretty compact, but they're also spreading it through the neighborhood with all that rock. After the baseball games, after the Shuckers play at Kessler Credit Union Field, I know they keep the lights on. I don't know how long they have to keep them on. I would assume until everybody leaves, but I think we pay the utility bill on that, so the sooner somebody can turn them off, because sometimes they're on till midnight. And I don't think they're into extra innings usually. Also, the girls softball fields at Holloway Complex, the girls fields, I'd gotten a couple of calls, the girls softball fields are done. Is that right?
It will be ready in the last stages of painting. I think in two weeks, the thing will be completely painted and ready to move forward.
Okay.
The field itself, the turf and the natural and the artificial turf are working together. It's in really good shape. They finished, they've replaced a number of concrete problems. And there's probably two weeks left, and the paint contractor doing everything that was sort of faded red and rusted. It's been treated, and we're in the final throes of that painting.
Well, but I understand that the girls softball fields were completed a couple of months ago, and the turf was done and everything.
Not ready to, you know, again, it was ready with the growth and a lot of rain and some drainage. It was, this is the reason why it didn't go forward. And I think it's there now. We'll visit it, I think, Monday. So it's there. We're ready, we'll be ready to roll as soon as the paint finishes.
Okay. Hiller Park, there's the pavilion out there. Somebody sent me pictures of that. It's falling apart. I think that comes under Parks and Recreation. And I don't know, are we gonna repair it? I know it's been shored up over the years.
We tried to remove it years ago, and everybody was up in arms about it, so we let it ride.
So it's there, but at some point, it's gonna be a liability. I don't know if you can repair it or not, but...
This is the pavilion at the waterfront, right at the corner, at the north.
Yeah, that's down there by the bay, that big pavilion.
Northwest corner of it.
Okay. And I want to, I see Walt Rhodey out there. I want to thank Walt for taking care of Oakmont Place, getting the contractor to grade that there at the intersection by Highway 90. It was pretty rough. Thank you, Walt, for doing that. That concludes my comments. Thank you, Ms. President.
Ms. Gavin?
Yeah, I only got a couple of things. First, I'd like to thank Public Works for taking care of a lighting issue on Valerie Drive. There's a brand new light that's installed. It was a very dark, dark area for the residents when they turned into that neighborhood, and rode it last night. It looks pretty good. So I just want to thank Public Works for that. The other thing, along with a couple of council members, Tisdale and Schumaker, we attended the Ward 4 forum. Appreciate all the energy that went into that, and the organizers out at Sunkist making that event happen. Got to hear from some good candidates, Kimberly Compton and Mr. Creel and McGilvery and others. And it was good to hear that. There was probably over 125 people in attendance to that, so there's a lot of interest in the leadership in Biloxi. And that concludes my report.
Mr. Schumaker?
Just a couple of things. MDOT's working on the roundabout still in Ward 7. They've continued to work on it about the last week, so things are looking good there. Hopefully, that'll be completed soon. They're getting a lot of work done. I know the rain's gonna hold them up, but hopefully, that'll continue. And ditches, drainage, culverts, I know I've mentioned it before, but Ward 7 is, it's pretty much daily, at least. I get phone calls. I know their Public Works is shorthanded, understaffed terribly, but whatever we can do to get them some help or get some things done up there, it'd be great. That's all I have. Thank you.
All right. This brings us to the public agenda, where we have citizen comments. We have a total time allotted of 45 minutes. Each person gets three minutes each to speak. Once you reach this desk here, please state your name and address aloud for the record, as well as write it down on the piece of paper that is provided. Anyone on my left, your right, that would like to get up and speak? Yes, sir? Come on down.
Good evening, Biloxi. I'm Jared Fusco from 435 Cove Drive. Since April 15th, Wendy Lally and I have been providing transparency and support to residents regarding the shipping container home project. As we release public records of the community, it became clear to us that most nearby residents were against this project. However, many of them could not, for career or health reasons, make it to the planning commission meeting. For this reason, we began a petition that resulted in 107 signatures against this project which you have received. As we canvass neighborhoods, we met nobody in support of this project. Residents were either against it, needed more information, or were concerned about having their name attached to anything political. Indeed, there were residents that were afraid of what might happen to their careers should they publicly acknowledge their opposition to a project backed by Ivan Spinner, whom has many personal connections across this city. I, due to my current career, have the fortune of not having this concern. I am a fairly new resident, which may give my words less value than those who have been here a long time. However, if you will not listen to me, read the list of 107 longtime residents that signed the petition, and then consider how many residents, known or unknown, who were silenced by fear. From the very beginning, there has been a lack of transparency regarding this project to include numerous violations of city law. I do not know if this is due to ignorance of the law, ineptitude, or malice, but we need to do better for the residents of Biloxi. It is for this reason that Wendy and I formed the West Biloxi Development Alliance, with the primary goal of improving transparency. Many residents are thankful for our efforts to inform them on what is happening in their city, but in many ways, our efforts are to do what the city of Biloxi has failed to do. An email I sent to you and Ward 4 candidates contains greater details than this speech, but allow me to share three key points. First off, Mr. Creel, the Director of Community Development, has explicitly given the responsibility for public hearing notifications in the land development ordinance. He has violated this ordinance for years, which explicitly states that notifications must be posted to the city's website without exception 15 days or more prior to the meeting. He violated this ordinance on 12 April, and then again on 25 April for this very project. Dr. Tisdale brought this up a few city council meetings ago, and Mr. Creel has failed to get in compliance. Without Dr. Tisdale working to get this project tabled at the 18 April Planning Commission meeting, the public would have had four days, four days, to get informed on this project, which is impossible with the city's current seven-day public release policy for records. For this very project to be approved in accordance with the law, it must meet eight required conditions, all of them, not just some, and it must be good for the public. Included in those conditions are the protection of property values, and most notably, compatibility with the character of the surrounding lands. City Council, please show us that lawlessness is not acceptable in this city, outside and within government. Disapprove this project and do the job the planning commission has failed to do. I can take questions now if you have any, but if you don't, I would prefer you hear from my residents who have been here a lot longer than me. Thank you.
Anyone else like to come speak? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Wendy Lally. I live at 324 Fairview Drive, and I'm the Secretary of our POA. I'm here tonight in opposition of the shipping container home conditional use application. Applications do require eight criteria, and all eight criteria does need to be met. It talks about promoting the public interest of the address. Seven rental units for college students and professors definitely do not benefit the public good or the public interest of that address. The application goes on to speak about protecting property values, and I do feel my property value would decrease if this were to be approved. However, in all reality, the onus is on the developer, Ivan Spinner, to prove why he should be granted conditional use, and not on us homeowners to raise concerns. When Mr. Spinner purchased the property, he knew it was own neighborhood business, and we feel he should be obligated to develop it as owned. He should not be allowed to change the character of our neighborhood. I want to make it very clear, I am not against development in West Biloxi or Ward 5. We've had some new recent businesses that are going to be coming to the area, the Pickler Indoor Pickleball Courts, as well as Adventurous Tavern. Those are perfect examples of what we need in West Biloxi. Jared and Fusco, this is true. We did, we gathered 107 signatures, petitions against this conditional use. A copy of the application, I'm sorry, a copy of the petition was emailed to the city, and I personally hand-delivered the original copy. However, that has been omitted from your packet today, and I will talk about that at the end. At the planning commission meeting, Mr. Spinner questioned the validity of these signatures, and questioned the validity of 107 signatures on the petition, and is to question the intelligence of myself and my neighbors. Jared and I also created a notice reminding neighbors of this meeting. The images on the flyer are what 320-square-foot shipping container homes from blocks look like. This is on their website. Okay? Mr. Spinner's application is requesting seven of these 320-foot shipping containers, homes. However, the images that he has on his application are not the images from the blocks' website. At this time, I would like to ask all those who are in attendance, my neighbors, to please raise your hand. And if you are able, neighbors, please come up, state your own name, and make it known that you are also against these shipping container homes. Council members, based on what I've said, along with 107 signatures, as well as these residents here in attendance today, ask your support by voting no and against this conditional use application. And I thank you for your time. Prior to the meeting, I did get with the clerk, and I did submit a copy of those signatures. She has those, and she will be attaching those to the minutes for this meeting. That will be available on the city's website. So thank you again for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else on our left?
I'm Michael Lally. I reside at 324 Fairview Drive, and I am also in opposition of the conditional use for shipping container homes. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else?
Good evening. I'm Dr. Keith Paul, and I reside in Edgewater Estates. I find myself once again before you all, as a resident of Biloxi, to express my concerns in regard to the integrity of the community within which I live. I am adamantly opposed to the development of these so-called tiny homes for the following reasons. They most certainly are not compatible with the character of the surrounding land and community. For goodness sakes, these are shipping containers, really? And rental property at that. I don't see why this venture is even being considered for West Biloxi, and I understand it's already been turned down for East Biloxi. Not only would Edgewater Estates be impacted, but also the other respected residential communities of Edgewater Cove, Channelmark, and Goose Point. This proposed development would not bring any value to the surrounding areas, but rather negatively impact the worth of real estate in these communities. In addition, you all approved the new road to the college, and I don't see this as an enhanced development along this route to the campus. Lastly, I question why this is even under consideration, as it is being proposed by, at least my understanding, by someone who has an unsavory past with the Justice Department when it comes to real estate. I think the city can do better than this, and I would highly recommend each and every one of you voting against it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? My left, your right, that would like to get up and speak? Yes, ma'am? Come on. Couldn't see your face, sorry.
Good evening, council members. I'm Sarah Chrisler Ruskey from the Harrison County Library System, and so this is a bit of a break from your previous discussion. But I just want to let you know first, just really quickly, it's summer reading time, so I hope if you have kids or grandkids, you'll sign them up and bring them to the library. The other thing is, I wanted to let you know that Sharon Davis, who was with our system for almost a quarter of a century, has taken a job with the Library Commission in Jackson. And I wanted to introduce Mr. Mike Alexander, who is our interim head, and just so you would get to know him, and just know who he is, because we'll be seeing y'all a lot soon, and just, he'll be taking care of the Biloxi libraries as we look for our next leader for this important part of our system. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Welcome. Thank you.
You got any words to say?
Yeah.
I'm looking forward to answering any questions you have, or if you need anything, just please put your hand up.
Very good. Thank you. All right. Anyone else? Okay, sir.
I appreciate you guys hearing my application today. The residence I'm talking about is 139 Briarfield Avenue. It is situated in a RM30 multifamily zone that's located about a north block of Beach Boulevard, and it's close to, the surrounding area is close to like Edgewater Mall, Motel 6, and the Surfstyle Shop. The area has a lot of tourist traffic. It's close to the beach. A few main attractions being the Coliseum and the Treasure Bay Casino. Also, my immediate neighbors to the north, south, east, and west of myself are also short-term rentals. And adding a mix to the destination, I think, would be a good fit, just in the surrounding I was recommended by the Planning Commission, and I'm humbly requesting conditional use for, to operate a short-term rental. And so I may enjoy the same considerations and opportunities. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Sir, what was your name?
David Vu.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? On my left, your right? Yes.
My name is Sherri Jacconi, and I live on Westview Drive in Edgewater. Thank you. Okay, thank you. I'll be brief. I made notes. I'm against the Container Park. It's an experiment, in my opinion, for Biloxi, at Edgewater Estates' expense and others. We are not other cities. Just because other big cities have them or are trying doesn't mean it's right for Biloxi. The location is wrong. Our property values will go down. We're already dealing with a lot, the new road that's going right behind my house, yet another street light, and traffic will be bad. Seven containers, shipping containers, next door to our beautiful, beautiful neighborhood would, I would never have dreamed it would be proposed. Honestly, would any of you want this in your neighborhood? A place, rhetorical, sorry, a place to live for college students, party central, wrong location, doesn't fit in with the character of our neighborhood. Please, don't let promises keep y'all from protecting us from this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? On my left, your right, that would like to get up and speak?
Hi. Wow. Hello. I believe that this project is maybe a little bit hasty right now, and I don't agree with it. I think that it violated so many of our ordinance that we have right now in place for the smart neighborhoods, setbacks, the zoning. I think that if you put it in layman's terms, what if they tore down the house next to you and put seven containers on it? You know, because that's what we're looking at here. They put that new road in there, it's already gonna create traffic for our neighborhood as it is, because I understand they're gonna put a light at the end of it. So it will make getting in and out of Westview Drive a little bit more difficult. Not to say what type of people are gonna be in there or nothing like that, but I don't believe that this suits the city at this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
What was your name?
My name is Rick McMurtry.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, ma'am? I'll get to y'all's side in just a second. Sorry.
Hi, I'm Ann Thomas. I live at 331 Eastview Drive in Edgewater Estates. I moved there about 20 years ago, and I've really loved it until recently. And it seems like all of a sudden, we've been discovered, and we've seen our neighborhood change in what I consider undesirable ways. The new road that is being built just a few feet from our entrance, the traffic we know is going to increase, but it was supposed to be mainly for the college. But now, they're starting to want to build these tiny container houses on about half an acre. I mean, it's like in a fenced-in backyard of this building. And how many, who knows how many more they may want to put in eventually. I think it's gonna change the character of West Biloxi for the worse. It's kind of an extreme development. That's why you have to have conditioner use permits, you have to have variances, and who knows, before it's over, they're gonna put gravel down instead of concrete. There's not enough parking spots. One of our neighbors, somebody already mentioned this, but one of our neighbors commented on our neighborhood Facebook page that it was interesting that the city couldn't approve the square footage of these houses there, that they could approve it here, yet on the point, they wouldn't, because the lots were too small to build back on. So I'd just like to say that I am opposed to this development. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? On my left, your right, that would like to get up and speak? Anyone else? Okay? Now, sir, you ready? Oh, sorry. Let him go first, please.
Oh, man. I thought we were gonna get those cookies.
It's been a long day.
All right, hello. I'm short, so let me pull this down. My name's Samuel Asperanti. I live on 311 Westview Drive. We've lived there for about a year and a half now. We purchased an older home, needed a lot of love. And we've put a significant amount of our time, money, and resources into it. Unexpected expenses pop up, right? That's going to happen. We saw our insurance increase by 700%, which was not to be expected. I don't have anything against the concept of tiny homes. I do think this is the wrong area for them. I don't believe they should be used as short-term rentals. I know that there are supposed to be conditions for protecting our property values. However, everyone that I've spoken to just about this concept feels negatively about the desirability of wanting to live there. I live, or I work in a line that requires us to move quite frequently. And I know that next summer, I will be somewhere else. I don't know where that is. However, our house will likely be on the market at that time. And I fear that the time and the money that we've already put into the home will be lost, struggling to find somebody to purchase the home. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, sir, you ready?
Come on down.
But my name's not Freddie. I'm Clifford C. Frisbee. I have spent majority of my life in Biloxi, Mississippi. And I do think that the container homes are probably going to be a useful thing for young couples or people starting out. But I don't feel like that the home values in that area are going to appreciate having a mobile home park put there next to them. And you said, "A mobile home park?" Well, they're kind of like a mobile home without the wheels. They're small, they're compact. But I don't think that any one of you council members up there would like to have a mobile home park next to your residence. I don't think that you would like to have it in your neighborhood. Now, there's got to be a good place for these. And I do think they're a benefit. But I don't think they're good for the home values of the owners of their properties in Goosepoint over into the other subdivisions, which I have a home in. And I feel like that this should be tabled or at least given some further consideration before we start moving containers into the area for homes. I think they're just too small. And they won't appreciate the value of the lot of the people that have had homes there for years. And they've been proud of them, and they take care of them. And now we're going to degrade them? I just want you to think about, would you like to have that next to you? Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Come on down.
Thank you for your time. My name's Tom McCormick. I live on 327 Westview Drive. My in-laws moved to Eastview Drive in 1962. My wife and I, when we moved back to Biloxi after being married, we moved on Westview Drive in 1984. So we've got a little vested interest in the community and the area. I'm not against development. I just don't think it fits. There's no identity to that. I mean, the road's in construction, so we don't know what the identity is going to look like. But I'm against the building of these homes or placing of these homes. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else on my right, your left, that would like to get up and speak? Anyone?
Good evening. Jordan Matthews, 2137 East Pasture Road, Gulfport, Mississippi. And I'm here today on behalf of the applicant and owner, TSG Real Estate 2 LLC, which is, whose principal is Ivan Spinner, as has been mentioned on several occasions tonight. And the request is simply that we are trying to get approval, a conditional use approval for seven single-family residential homes in a neighborhood business zoned property. I think there's been some miscommunication or some misunderstandings about the process of how we go about getting to tonight. The applicant, despite accusations of people tonight, has timely filed all applications and met all required deadlines that the city puts in place. They talked about not having enough time to prepare for meetings. But the applicant agreed to continue the Planning Commission meeting and agreed to continue tonight's meeting for the purposes of allowing them, anytime that they needed, to be prepared for both meetings. We agreed to continue both times. Despite the same or similar objections at the Planning Commission, the Planning Commission agreed to approve this project 14 to 0 was the vote. All of the nine elements of a conditional use were met at the Planning Commission meeting. And I will just incorporate the record of the Planning Commission meeting by record so that we don't, since we're limited in time, I can't go through all nine elements tonight. But I will just incorporate that record that was approved by a 14 to 0 vote at the lower level. The applicant, Ivan, has a longstanding track record of development all over the coast. I mean, just blocks from here, you can look at the Bella in Biloxi, which is named after his daughter. In this development, the proposed name is De Austin, which is his son. You can look at Hansbro Condominiums in Gulfport. You can look at all the new and revitalized commercial developments along Past Road. This developer is more ingrained in this neighborhood. He lives in Goosepoint. He's more ingrained in this neighborhood than I am. And my grandfather is a Mahanovich. So he spent more money and more time and more energy developing this neighborhood than anyone in this room tonight. None of his developments have ever resulted in a negative impact on any of the neighborhoods that they've gone in. There was also a comment about short-term rentals. We've made no request for approval of a short-term rental. To do that, we would have to file separate applications and get separate approval. And at this time, there's no intention or there's never been any statements related to that request. I have the developer of the tiny homes. And I also have the owner here tonight to answer any questions that y'all may have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else on my right, your left? Yes, sir? Come on down.
My name is Frank Willem. I live at 7 Old Oak Lane in Gulfport, Mississippi. First of all, I'd like to congratulate the city of Biloxi. As I said, I've been here for nearly 50 years. And in that time, the character of the coast has changed. We've heard a lot of talk about change, and it's certainly changed a lot. And if you look at Biloxi compared to many of the other cities around the coast, you'll see a stark difference. I think you, as a city, have been a leader in that kind of change for the better. And I think it's important to move forward. We started blocks building three years ago. And it's a $60 billion business. So it's not something we dreamed up, and it's not experimental. It's very prominent in Australia, New Zealand, 37 states, including Colorado, Texas. California, which has some of the strictest land use requirements, is a very favorable area for container homes. Our intent was to bring robust housing to Mississippi, housing that can withstand the storms that we face. Containers can be recycled, and it's in really nice houses. In fact, they can be clad in such a way you can't tell what they're made of. Each container that we use is built to four tons of Corten steel. Corten is the same steel that you see these bridges that are kind of a rust color. They don't have to paint them, because the Corten steel skims over and doesn't rust appreciably. And those bridges are designed for 100 years. There's been a lot of talk during this process about containers being designed for 25 years. And that's a true statement. But it's for their intended purposes. They go on ships that stay offshore for the whole lifetime of the container. And the containers are immersed in saltwater the whole time and then subjected to very abusive treatment when they're loaded and unloaded and oftentimes dropped. We use strictly one-trip containers. They're built in Asia, they come over here, and then we buy them. One could reasonably assume that in that benign environment, these will last for two to three times the design life for the intended application, or 50 to 75 years. They can be finished to be very robust, yet economical homes, as low as $120 a square foot. Or they can be finished to two or three times that cost with high-end finishes like granite, as Ivan intends to do along with decks and amenities to make attractive small communities that I think many of us would enjoy being a part of. I've invested $2 million and bought 32 acres to develop a site to produce these that are quality. And that's the whole underlining premise. A lot of those dollars went into engineering to make sure that they would be the type of dwelling that any of us would feel comfortable and safe in. We use tools like finite element analysis and other modeling software to ensure that our products are engineered to withstand 160 mile-an-hour winds. Blocks building our company is the only container-based modular home manufacturer in Mississippi. They require us to have stamped plans that are signed by a Mississippi certified engineer. And we are certified IRC.
Sorry, sir, your time is up. But we'll call you back up if you have any more questions when I get to it. Anyone else? Yes, sir?
Ivan Spinner, 440 Green Teal Court, Biloxi, Mississippi. I'm the developer of this project.
The mic went out.
There you go. All right. So when I first got this project, my biggest thing was doing, highest investments in this property. I live right next door, just like you neighbors do. I live in Goosepoint. And I actually spoke to almost every one of my neighbors. And I even joined your committee. And I ask people, like, you know, what are you against and what are you not against? So I try to, I put on the website, what are you guys for and what are you not? I'm able to build commercial space at that unit today. And I will. I mean, if this gets rejected, I'll do the same thing. But I want everyone to know, it's going to be built out of containers. I've traveled all across the country, and I've seen them. It's an unbelievable project. When people go look in other areas like California, Colorado, other areas, these containers look like even better than homes. But they're bulletproof. I mean, a storm is not taking them away. And you can make them as nice as any home as you want. And just so people know, price per square foot, I'm spending probably two and a half times I could do a stick build. But either way, I want to bring the container model to the coast, because I believe in it, and I think it's a really neat concept. And I think when people see it done, they're going to see it's first class. I didn't even know about this conditional use petition they had until people from their neighborhood and my neighborhood were calling me up. And one of the reasons why I said I was upset about it is, if you read the petition, what they say, and almost everyone was calling me, people were thinking I was building this for the homeless. And that's not the case. It has nothing to do with homeless. It could be done by college people, anyone else. But if you look at it, they have 117 people that signed it. But right here, it says, "The unclear messaging of this tiny home will target the homeless." I mean, this has got nothing to do with the homeless. So I don't know if there was one, or, obviously, there's a good representation here, 80 people here that think I was, when they signed this, that I was going to do this project for the homeless. Again, I live in Goosepoint. It's the end of my subdivision. I would never do anything to harm my own property value or anybody else's. I do believe this is, when they see this project done, it's going to be an amazing project. But either way, just want to be everyone clear, this will be a container project, one way or the other, because I believe in it, and I think we need to bring change to the coast. And I think it's going to be a huge added value to the entire Mississippi Gulf Coast. If you have any questions, I'm here.
Thank you. Anyone else on my right, your left, that would like to get up and speak? Anyone else in the room? All right. If not, citizen comments are now closed. Moving on to the policy agenda, Ms. Carey.
Resolution granting conditional use approval to authorize construction of seven detached, single-family units located at 2740 Past Road.
I'll move it.
Yeah, that's right. We take.
This was our, oh, okay. It was previously moved by Mr. Tisdale and seconded by Mr. Lawrence. Any discussion, Mr. Tisdale?
Yes, and I think, did we motion that last time for discussion purposes? Or when we originally tabled it? Do you recall, Carrie? You may not have that detail. I'm sorry.
May 21st.
Okay, a couple of observations. And Jerry, just to be clear, this conditional use is necessary in order to permit seven single-family residences in a commercial zone. Is that correct?
In B zoning, yes, sir. Because this is multiple units that are going to be rented out on one piece of property, then it falls into the category of multifamily residential. And multifamily residential is a conditional use in B.
Okay. Thank you, Jerry. The applicant notes the development is necessary to promote public interest and to provide housing to supplement the significant increase in population. But I attended the Planning Commission meeting. There was no one who spoke in support of this project. And I admit, it's an intriguing proposal. However, at that Planning Commission meeting, there were a number of folks from Edgewater Estates, the Channelmark Cove Drive area. I don't know if anyone spoke from Goosepoint, but several spoke against this development. The fact that it's going to be a one-of-a-kind community in close proximity to traditional neighborhoods, I believe, is what has neighbors wondering and worried about their property values. And Jerry, if I remember correctly, this property has legal access directly to Past Road by way of a 25-foot easement that's reflected on the survey.
That's correct.
Correct. That's on the west side of the existing structure on that corner, I believe. And the owner owns both properties, both parcels, A and B. And if parcel A is sold, then the new owner is required to maintain that easement. Is that correct? So that whoever's residing there, should this residential proposal get off the ground, will have access to and from that. I assume 25 feet is big enough to get a fire truck in there, if you've got to get a fire truck in there.
For single floor, yes.
Right.
Once it gets above, a structure gets above 30 feet, they need a little bit more than that, but 25 would get it in there, yes, sir.
Okay, I'm assuming, can a garbage truck get in there and make the circuit? I don't know if they can do that. It's kind of a tight turn.
It should be able to, if the fire truck can get in there.
Should be able to, okay. That's noted. The city's land development ordinance defines a dwelling unit as 390 square feet. Is that accurate?
Correct, yes, sir.
And these are 320?
320 is what they're proposing. They did suggest that there may be some additions to some, that they may do some build-out on some of them that would get them up to there. But they wanted to have that variance was approved by the Zoning Board of Adjustments and Appeals, just in case they had one that was less than 390 square feet.
Okay. And as I understand it, these containers are 40 feet long and eight feet wide?
Yes, sir.
Just to give everybody an idea of what 40 feet by eight feet looks like, if you look at the flag up here, between that flag or the edge of the table, this edge of the table to the wall is about eight feet. So that's how wide it's going to be. And the 40-foot length runs from this wall all the way back, Dr. Paul, about three feet behind you. There, I put a little bit of tape on the carpet so you can see. It's about where the speaker is on the wall, back there. So you can see it's long and narrow. And I would assume, due to construction and the interior and everything, that there's actually a little less than 320 square feet on the inside. So it'd be more likely about 300 square feet at best. I'm guessing. I'm not the developer. I don't know. There may be more to it than that. I'm guessing, I'm not the developer, I don't know, there may be more to it than that. Personally, I believe we should revise our code of ordinances to address container homes, and what zoning is required for these types of homes. Mobile homes, for example, are required to have twelve-hundred square feet of enclosed floor area, and are permitted only in certain zones. And some of you might recall that this council began approving short-term rentals before we had any language in the ordinances dealing with short-term rentals. It was maybe a year or so went by, and we finally got some language in there. Conditional use standards, there are eight or nine of them. One of them, item B, the conditional use complies with the standards in section, in this case, standard section twenty-three dash four dash three, that's use-specific standards, but it really doesn't meet the minimum square footage for dwellings, correct?
It doesn't meet what's required in the LDO, no.
Okay. And I don't believe that it's within the character of surrounding properties, because they're all, pretty much, is it time for me to stop? I heard somebody say, "Shut up down there, get a better ringtone, Mr. Gaines." But the...
How was it?
But I don't believe it's in character with the surrounding properties. The conditional, the last item is the conditional use allows for the protection of property values and the ability of neighboring lands to develop the uses permitted in zoning district. And I really think that's, this is unknown, there's no other development like this in the city of Biloxi, although, and some of you may be aware of this or not, but we do have some containers at Martinis.
At Martinis and also at Shaggy's.
Right, and those are commercial properties.
Yes, sir.
And they've been at Shaggy's for a while, and like I say, I'm kind of intrigued with the development, and because it's in a commercial zone, the developer could pull permits and start, pretty much start on a commercial project later this week, would that be accurate? No other action would be necessary by the council or the planning commission. In summary, although the developer has done some really nice projects, really, and I hope he continues to do neat projects in the city of Biloxi, I just think this is the wrong project and the wrong location at this time. Thank you.
Mr. Lawrence?
According to the LDO, three-hundred square feet is a cottage. There's no such thing in the LDO as tiny homes. I tell you that before, we need to probably sit down and discuss that. So that's something you need to bring up and put some kind of specs to it. The only thing listed in the LDO is a cottage, three-hundred square feet, you can have in New York. Compatible to the neighborhood, it's not, is a need, that's up to anybody's opinion, I don't think there is. You know, these things here are part of the conditional uses that go with this. We got rid of the shotgun houses on the point, for that reason. There was eight by forty, same thing. We eliminated them because people figured that was out of town, people wanted to build a home, build a nice home, build a nice neighborhood, you know? Yeah, Shaggy is the only place that actually uses those containers as part of their business. You know, I know they had a maintain, but I don't think, he might use it for storage, but as far as the business, Shaggy stacked those two on top of each other and used it as part of their restaurant, been in them. Like you said, that's commercial, that's a little different. But I mean, to set these up as homes, I mean, I don't see where the need is, that's speculation. There's no need, especially in this neighborhood, to me, or inside of City of Biloxi anywhere. But that's just my opinion, I don't think there's a need for them, I don't think it's going to work, I don't know who wants to live in a three-hundred-square-foot house for the rest of their life, that's not much room. So that's just my opinion. If it don't meet the compatibility in the neighborhood, there's not a need for it, there's just certain things that, and the property value, I would say those homes on Fairview, those are those four, five-hundred thousand dollar homes, those are nice homes, nice neighborhood, been a great neighborhood ever since they built it. So no, I just can't support that. Thank you.
Anyone else? Go ahead, Mr. Glavine.
Yeah, so I've said before on some of these issues, you know, I put a lot of weight on what the councilman in the area, what his position is, and certainly the next step is the residents that live in that area. However, this petition bothers me a little bit that it did contain the verbiage that this is going to target homeless. It is an intriguing project, and Ivan Spinner, I think, has quite a reputation as a developer. As far as a need, certainly we live in an area that's subjected to storms and stuff like this, and these tiny homes, container homes, certainly a new concept for this area, but it does have the reputation to withstand high wind loads that a traditional stick-built home carries. So all that being said, trying to cut through it, it may be appropriate, and I'll make a motion that we table this subject to call, just in case there's any new information down the road, perhaps, but I'd make a motion that we table this subject to call.
Okay, we've got a motion to table it, subject to call by Mr. Glavine, do we have a second? I'll go ahead and second it.
Okay. Would the council allow me to at least show you on the board what's being proposed, the site plan and some other things, just so you'll know all the facts? This email that was sent out is just full of false information, and we, let me assure you, we do follow the advertising guidelines for everything, I'll be happy to show you any file we've got over there about following those. This one particular case, and we explained this to Dr. Tisdale very clearly in our office, when the city started going to one docket a month to approve payments, it created a serious problem with us and the Sun Herald. And so what happened is, is that this particular project was not advertised for fifteen days, it was advertised for fourteen days, one less than what was required. So the girls asked me, "Do we need to pull this off?", and I said, "No, leave it on, and let's just see if we get a complaint about it." Well, Dr. Tisdale brought it to my attention that someone had raised the question that it had not been advertised for fifteen days, only fourteen days. And so what we agreed to do was to continue that hearing from the planning commission to the next meeting to add another two weeks, so that nobody would be blindsided about it. This project went to the DRC on March the thirteenth, the DRC agenda is posted online for everybody to see, so nobody was trying to hide anything, which is what this email, the tone of this email is, is that the city was trying to hide something, that's not the case. The comments from that meeting were sent out on the fifteenth of March and on the twentieth of March, all right? Then we met the required mailing notices, everything was done correctly, except that one thing we didn't have any control over with the Sun Herald, because under their new rules, if you're one day late paying that bill, they cut you off, and it takes almost a day on the phone to get it straightened out, because their billing is done from another state. There was a question about the agenda, and that they had, the neighbors had requested that a copy of the application be sent to them, and that we didn't do it. There is a reason that we hold that agenda, Mr. Gaines was on the planning commission, he understands this. We don't send out any information about the individual cases until we've put those packets into the hands of the planning commission members. A planning commission member should not be blindsided by a citizen complaining about a project when they haven't even received the package yet. So what we do is we put those packets, we hand-deliver those packets to the planning commission members on the Friday prior to the next Thursday meeting, to give them a chance to go out to the site and look at it, to read through the case. When I first got here, they were handing those packets to the planning commission members as they walked in for the meeting, and that was just unacceptable. I mean, the planning commission members have to have it, so we don't release that information. Once we've put the planning commission packets in the hands of the planning commission members, then if somebody files a public record request, we'll give them whatever they're asking for. But I wanted to make sure you understood that we follow the ordinance on the advertising, the posting of the signs on the property, everything there, and I'll be glad to show you. Carey, would you please put the oversight up here? This is a copy of the site plan for what's being proposed, and as you can see, this is behind Mr. Spinner's, this is behind Mr. Spinner's building, his building is here, it faces Pass Road, there is an easement over on the west side that comes up into there, so this property would have access. They are negotiating with the community college to have an access over here onto this road, that has not been approved yet, of course, the city has not accepted the road yet, so that's probably going to come somewhere down the line. Next. This is the property that we're talking about, you can see from the overhead, this is Mr. Spinner's building, this is the location he's proposing to put it on, this narrow stretch here is the road, and between that road and the Edgewater Estates house, there is a strip of property right here that is undeveloped. The one lot facing Pass Road is on N B, it's already got a building on it, but everything from there on up is on single-family residential, again, it's undeveloped. If anyone came in here and tried to develop anything but single-family houses on that property, they would have to go through the DRC, through the planning commission, and through the city council, in order to get the zoning change for it. So between what's being proposed, you've got the road, you've got the vacant, single-family residential property, before you get to the Edgewater Estates property, which all of those houses face the opposite direction, they face to the east, so they're not looking over at this property here. Now, what, Mr., can you go to the next one? This shows you the zoning that we were talking about. Here's Mr. Spinner's property, this is what's proposed, this is a commercial building, this is the road, where the road is proposed, you have one piece of N B that faces Pass Road, and then everything from here on up is RS-ten, single-family zoning. Mr. Spinner is proposing to, there's a fence around the property right now, but he's proposing to build a new fence around this property, so that these would not even be seen. He's going to do a very nice fence that he'll put all the way around it to create a screen with landscape on the outside, so that nobody would be able to see it. The other thing I'd point out, too, is that there's no connector, no connector, vehicle connector, pedestrian connector, between Edgewater Estates and this property, this new road that's going in, there's nothing there, so there's no way. All of those properties in Edgewater Estates come out to Pass Road, and there's nothing here. Now, further up the road, there is a proposal that Mr. Ford had submitted, where he wanted to build twenty new single-family houses, and there would be a road north of this that would come down and supposedly would tie in with the new commercial road going in. But I just wanted to point out, this is not right next door to Edgewater Estates, as has been said. There is zoning there, they're not requesting short-term rental, if they did, they would have to come back and go back through the planning commission and city council to get approval for that. So, you know, the fact that this is on commercial property, also, let me just point out one other thing, there are some things that could go in there right now without even having to have city council approval, or planning commission approval. They could put a restaurant in there, they could put a bank in there, they could put a convenience store on this piece of property, they could put a liquor store on this piece of property.
Jerry, we're not dealing with that. We're not dealing with, couldn't go there, we're dealing with these seven containers.
I understand that, Mr. Lawrence.
So we're not dealing with what could be there. I have no problem if the guy wants to develop a commercial, that's fine, so that really has nothing to do with what we vote on.
I think it has everything to do with it.
No, no.
Yes, sir.
It does, no, we're talking about seven, ten houses.
Okay.
Period.
My responsibility is to make sure that you know all the facts about, whether you voted up or you voted down, that's up to you, but you have to have all the facts about these cases before you vote on them, and I wanted to make sure that there wasn't anything misleading, because if I had read this email that was sent out, and I'm not sure where the first gentleman that spoke said that we've been violating the law for years, I never even met this man, don't even know him, today's the first day I've laid eyes on him, but again, I'll show you anything that we've got in our files to show you that we follow the law. But this is the case, this is why the planning commission voted fourteen to nothing to approve this case, it's because they saw, they didn't believe that this was going to have an adverse effect on Edgewater Estates. Now, again, you're the ones that vote on this, and whether you voted up or voted down is up to you, but I just have a responsibility to make sure that when you vote on something, you have all the facts before you vote. And I'm sorry.
Thank you, Jerry. Go ahead, Mr. Tisdale.
Yes, Mr. Crew Thirds, welcome to the party.
Thank you.
So if I understood correctly, and I think I do, I may not, but there are two things, apparently we're not meeting the fifteen-day advertising requirement, we're meeting the fourteen-day advertising requirement, but we're not meeting the fifteen, and again, that's a paying the herald kind of thing, but it just seems to me that if we're a day late getting it to the herald, we just advertise.
Well, I thought I made that clear. We continued the advertisement after the day that you and I met. We didn't stop the advertisement just because of the fourteen days. When you pointed out that it was fourteen days, we continued that ad until the next meeting, which was two weeks later, so we clearly met the fifteen-day minimum requirement.
In this instance, you did, I'm not questioning that, because we did talk about it. But going forward here, that's still in the ordinance, we still have to advertise for fifteen days, are we able to do that?
We are, we are, because I think we've gotten some of the problems cleared up with the Sun Herald. One of the things that really challenges us with the advertisement is that, and I've tried to get this changed, I've talked to Senator Delano about it, is that a lot of people don't get the printed newspaper anymore.
That's true.
But the ordinance says that we have to advertise in a newspaper of regular circulation in order to get it done. I've tried to get that changed to where we can do it either in the printed paper or digitally, and he ran into some opposition when he took it before the legislature, for whatever reason, but everything is digital now, I mean, everything, we all look up stuff on our smartphones, you know, and so I'm just trying to get us to where we keep up with the times, so that those people that don't get the printed paper have the ability to pull up information about what's going on.
But I also believe it has language in there that it says, I can't remember it exactly, but about where it's advertised, I believe.
That's correct.
And one of those says on the city's website, it says explicitly, but we don't do that until the Friday, sometimes the Saturday, before the planning commission meeting.
Well, that's not required to be done beforehand, I mean, if you look at the ordinance, it says that we put out the agenda, the agenda goes out, everybody's aware of what's going on, but we've done the advertisements to meet the other requirements that are in there, we post signs on the property well in advance of the meeting, so that nobody's blindsided. The fact that these people contacted us about it showed that everybody was aware that the advertisements clearly worked the way that they were supposed to work, so.
But as a practical matter, if it's out there Friday night, usually it's Fri, and it's better than it used to be, but usually it's out there Friday by five o'clock, or thereabouts, the end of the day. The planning commission meeting is meeting on Tuesday, or the HRC for that matter. So as a practical matter, I've got, well, nobody's at work Saturday and Sunday, so that leaves me Monday, if I have any questions, or which is, what, two, three days before the planning commission. I don't, I can't, I just recall seeing on the city's website that phrase, but it may be, I just want to be sure we're complying with the timelines, because that's the, I mean, if you're not doing, if we're not doing the things we're supposed to do procedurally, it's kind of tough to win any sort of argument. I mean, we need to be doing what we say we're doing in the ordinances, and if we're not, then if we need to modify the ordinances, or we need to reshuffle our procedure, whatever, adjust our procedure. So that's my only observation at this point. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah, on the, we still have the table, it's on the table, to table it.
Yes.
But actually, Kenny, I'd ask you to withdraw that. Everybody came to speak, no one's here to speak, they all here, table is not going to do any good. Even the man said he had built something else if this fails, so he's ready to move on one way or the other. The citizens need to have an answer from us, so table it, to me, is not the answer.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence, and you know, you have the right to make any proposals, you've made rights, or you've made motions to table, and some of them have been supported, some of them haven't. Mr. Spinner can do anything he wants, tomorrow he can go withdraw his application, go... Tomorrow, he can go withdraw his application, go develop commercially. Or he can go talk to his neighbors and try to convince them that, you know, this project may or may be worthwhile. And it gives us a chance to maybe look at it a little bit deeper. And it gives a chance for those on that petition that thought it was targeting homeless to say, no, I'm still against this project, or maybe I'm swayed differently. So I'm not voting against or for the project tonight. I'm just saying it might be better just to table it and let cooler heads prevail for a little bit. We could always bring it up and vote it up or down, you know?
But I'm just saying, nobody spoke today, said anything about homeless. Not the first person. They spoke about their property value, where they live at, and it's more about property value and the need and compatibility of the neighborhood. Not one person mentioned a homeless. Now, you said I was on a petition. He said that. I've never seen that. So that's why I said that's not any reason to table it, because somebody said it was a homeless deal. It's not. They weren't about their property value, compatibility of the neighborhood, and the need. That's their concern. And they're the people that live there.
Understood.
Okay. Mr. Guines, you got anything?
No, I was a little interested in the 14 days. You advertised 14 days. You come one day shy, but you continued to do it another 14 days. So actually, what you're saying is you actually advertised 20, what is it?
Or exceeded the 14 days.
You exceeded the 14 days. So basically 48, but 28 days.
Dr. Tisdale brought that to our attention, that someone had raised the question about, that it had only been raised for, advertised for 14 days.
Right.
And we said, well, we'll just extend it for another two weeks, and that's exactly what we did.
So essentially, you have 28 days.
And we continued to advertise, yes, sir, after that.
So why would that be a question if you did it 28 days?
It shouldn't be, yeah.
Yeah, that was my concern.
Mr. Schumacher, anything? Okay, all in favor of tabling? Three, all against? Three? All right, now what, Carrie? I know the motion fails. Still on the table, okay. All right, now what, guys?
So that fails, so we're going to vote on it?
Yeah, we just called for the question and voted.
That's it.
Well, I need a motion to approve, correct?
No, it's.
No?
No, it's on the table.
All right, so all in favor? All against?
Wait a minute.
It's me, four. Everyone's against, but you're abstaining?
What is the motion? What is the motion? The resolution is for it?
Yes.
Okay, all four?
Four. Okay, two, four, one, two, three, four, against. Moving on to resolution B.
So the motion fails, correct?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay.
Resolution granting conditional use approval to authorize a short-term rental located at 139 Briarfield Avenue.
Do I have a motion?
Move.
Motion by Mr. Guines.
Second.
Second by Mr. Glavine. Any discussion, Mr. Guines?
None.
Mr. Glavine?
What is this on?
Jerry, you want to talk about this a little bit?
Carrie, can you put the short-term rental up there?
Before you begin, I want to understand, in and around this area is predominant short-term rentals, correct?
It is, and that's what I was going to show you on the map.
Thank you.
Is it, the property right next door has already been approved as a short-term rental, 137. There are 35 short-term rentals on Briarfield. And the majority of them are in Dr., Mr. Zhang, Frank Zhang's apartment building, where it's zoned CB and it allows it as a use by right. But the, the properties here. This right in here is all short-term rental. This is Mr. Zhang's property. This is a property in question, and the property right next door has already been approved as a short-term rental.
Hey, Jerry, is that CB?
CB.
Right.
The one before you today, Mr. Lawrence, is in RM 30 zoning, which is why it's a conditional use. That's why you are here in it today.
This was like part of the residential neighborhood, and like you said, how many have been turned into short-term rentals? That's a lot.
There's 35 on Briarfield, and most of them are in the apartment building there that's being built.
Yeah. Sign it with, that's in your ward, Paul?
Yes.
Thank you, I'm sorry. I was busy reading.
What are you doing over there, asleep?
I was thinking. Go ahead, did you have a question? No, a comment. Yeah, I do have some comments. Sorry, Ms. President. On the conditional use application, application for this short-term rental, it says, is the use, one of the standards is, is the use necessary to promote public interest at that location? And the response was, yes, we desire to add a vacation accommodation for the public. Although I don't understand honestly how another short-term rental promotes the public interest at this location, it really no longer runs afoul of the nine conditional use standards since adjacent properties on three sides are now all short-term rentals. I wish to point out that the first short-term rental approved and permitted by the City of Biloxi, that was in August of 2018, was on Briarfield Avenue, a block north of this address, even though there were no ordinances to regulate short-term rentals at that time. Today, this small neighborhood has more short-term rental units than single-family residential homes. It serves as a cautionary tale as to how a business industry can overwhelm an established neighborhood. And it all began with approving one conditional use. And that makes it much easier to approve the next conditional use. That's the end of my comments, Ms. President. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Glavine, did you have anything?
I don't.
Okay. Anyone else? All right, all in favor? All against? Four, two. Do we have a motion on the consent agenda?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Lawrence, second by Mr. Tisdale. Any discussion items, Mr. Lawrence?
I know when we substituted the trailer, it was just changing the name out of Loews and Fisher to Coalition. Who should handle that?
Yeah.
Right.
Open Doors Coalition, not on the original motion.
Yeah.
Wrong name.
I thought that was just a change in the name. On the, this bond that we have, what is this bond on it? Is this the same one we've been dealing with?
Yeah.
Is this the one with the death port? Or that's not the death port bond?
Yeah, it's the same one. Okay. Okay, that's it.
Mr. Guines?
Oh, we got the boom-boom committee again. All right, let's go for the boom-boom committee. That's all.
Mr. Tisdale?
Yes, I have a question about the bond, the bond, basically, and I don't know, who would be handling the, this portion? Who would answer, Quay? You may know the answer. We don't want to put the new guy on the spot, but I'm not that familiar with bonds. But it mentions par value. Is it typical for the par value to exceed the amount of the bonds? In this case, it's a bond for 5 million, and they mentioned add 388,000 to the original issue premium, less 75,000 underwriter's discount, less 103,000 to be deposited in the bond issuance expense. But it says, terms of the sale have been finalized. The 5.2 million represents a par value of these 2024 bonds. I don't know. Can anybody explain par value? No reason to hold it up, I'm just curious.
I think it's going to yield more than the 5 million.
Okay. Well, I learned something tonight. Thank you very much. That concludes my comments.
Mr. Glavine?
I have nothing.
Okay, Mr. Schumacher?
I don't have anything.
Okay. All in favor of the consent agenda? Unanimous vote? Any exceptions? No? No, 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 no?
A.
A, sorry. George is against A. Okay, code enforcement?
Item A, Akron Cleveland Construction Group, 444 Allen Street. We would ask for 30 days on this. They are working on it.
I move it.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Lawrence and second by Mr. Guines for 30 days. All in favor? Unanimous?
Item B, Guy Cobb, 382 Fowler Street. That case has been resolved. Item C, Gulf South Flooring LLC, 250 Lee Street. That case has been resolved. Item D, Ben Van Nguyen, 415 Clay Street. This property is still in violation.
Is there anyone here to speak on behalf of Ben Van Nguyen at 415 Clay Street? If not, this case is closed.
Item E, Tha T Nguyen, 380 Fowler Street. That case has been resolved. Item F, Nicholas Keith Rodoffich, 180 Claiborne Street. We would ask for 30 days on that. The property has been cleaned up. It's a vacant lot, but they left the debris out by the road at some limbs and things. And they have a contractor coming this weekend to remove those, so we would ask for 30 days.
I move with 30 days.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Lawrence and second by Mr. Guines for 30 days. All in favor? Unanimous vote?
Item G, Helen Wilson, 13309 Green Hill Circle. That case has been resolved.
Thank you. Do we have a motion on the routine agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Guines, second by Mr. Tisdale. Go ahead, Mr. Lawrence.
Where's he at? Come on, Lawrence, you didn't put a town or anything this week. What is this? You must be low-riding back there.
I had it on when I was back there, but it was starting to get a little hot, so.
Give it the big check. Give it the big check.
So last time we spoke, we had that a little over $700,000 came in from MEMA. Currently, we have $269,000 in their pipeline. It's in their step three of five, and that's, we're waiting on the GAR approval, and they'll be coming our way. So 269,000, a little over that.
Well, we still on top of everything.
Yes, sir, we still got plenty of money to pay the bills.
Right. Appreciate the update.
To pay my bills.
All in favor of the routine agenda? Unanimous vote? Do I have a motion to adjourn? Motion by Mr. Tisdale, second by Mr. Guines, all in favor? Unanimous vote? Meeting is adjourned.